Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. So, right off the bat, we have election of officers for twenty-two.
Most of them, ten officers from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Yes, Larry, and I don't have most choice then.
You can take both if you want to.
Well, yeah, I'll take a vote, all fair.
Aye.
Both, okay, great. Okay, now I need to look at your appointments. Um, I don't think that there's, I mean, if anybody wants to make a change, that's fine. Um, we'll kind of run down through them, just to kind of go over them. JB, you're still willing to do the plan?
Yes.
Business. Roy and I, are you still interested in doing their?
Fine.
What do they call that, redevelopment commission? Cameron, you good with the waste district?
Yeah.
Solid waste.
Yeah.
Town of Rockville. Uh, Economic Development Commission, Larry, do they even meet, or do they? Well, we'll, we'll appoint you, I guess, anyway, I guess, if they, you're keeping the West End for now.
I'll give it one more.
Cindy's smiling.
Yeah, she's thrilled for that one.
Well, I was hoping to doubt that on her, if I had.
That's why she's thrilled.
That's why she's thrilled, right? Uh, Alcohol Board, George Nicholas. Um, so, we have Matt Helderman is our park appointment. And, what, Nicole Cr- or no, Pam Hammonds, I'm sorry.
Pam's still, had one year left.
Pam has one year left.
And that should have been reappointed last year.
He was appointed last, reappointed last year, should have been. Okay. Uh, zoning appeals, Brad Crankcraft. I think the assessor is recommending Shorter and Davis again, I think we have that in our packet.
I assume both of them are not getting paid?
None, none of my board takes any payment. I leave the five hundred in my budget, just in case something changes, but none of, none of my board takes any payment for a job that is no fun.
No, I know it's no fun, but these two obviously cannot.
No, they cannot. Yes.
They're both like the officials.
Correct. So, that's why they can do it if they don't take payments, so my whole board just decides not to take payment.
It's fine, I just want to make that sure that's still the case.
It absolutely is.
Okay, and then on the Park County Library Board, we appointed Sheila Roar to replace Judy Brooke. Sherry Paxton took Randy Wright's position. The Madazuma one is Paul Valentine. Nine-one-one Advisory and Communications Board, is it, Larry has that? Cameron has the Local Emergency Preparedness Commission, and Emergency Management Advisory Board, and Clutter is our attorney. Think by having changes, or objections, or concerns?
I'll move to second off the appointments.
Second. Most have been made, except to adopt the appointments, all fair. All right, Department head comments, Randy, we'd ask you, some of us have been getting comments about what happened with the truck, so if you could explain what went on with that, because we've all heard about it as a different story, so, why don't you clear it up for us?
Well, he was, uh, slammed him Saturday evening, night, or evening, and put his leg out in one place. Um, and he went down through the flat, when he drove forward.
Is this the one by Judson, or despite the?
On Flavero.
Flavero?
One Hundred North.
On One Hundred down the road.
Oh, One Hundred North, okay.
There at the Sanatorium Bridge.
Okay.
And, when he hit the, uh, approach for the slab, it was a sheet of ice.
Tucking right out.
Broke away, and, so, and often they went over the creek on the side, cut off the slab. He got out, he was all right.
Good.
Luckily. And we did have to leave the truck in there overnight, because the wrecker couldn't get up here. We got a Bentley engine on, he's got that articulated boom on his wrecker, so he could reach over and pick it up, bring it over, send it on the bank, and then up to it, pull it in. So, that's basically what happened.
That's the, that's the story. Is the truck ruined, or are we not sure yet, or?
No, no, waiting on the insurance adjuster. Um, of course, it was in the water, so, uh, there, been water getting in the engine through the exhaust, and, uh, imagine the, uh, electronic, uh, computer, was probably damaged.
Right.
And it did tear up the side of the truck, the mirror, uh, the hood, uh, the doors mashed in some.
How high was the water, do you remember, or did you see, or I mean, was it running across, was it running across the slab, the end?
It was running across the slab, it was probably a hundred foot and a half on the slab. But I told him, next time, he's turn around, back down through sand, and then come up out of it, and then go around, and come in the other direction, get out of there.
Right, right, well, there's no doubt it was slick, I mean, it got slick fast there Saturday afternoon, so, well, that's all we wanted to know, or some of us, I had been told it was the one up by Judson, so see, you know, we get all these different information, so, we just want to know what happened, we're glad that the driver was, uh, fine and all of that, so, uh, that was really all.
He's been with us since, uh, November of twenty, so, that's not his first time being out.
Right, well, it is slick.
New driver.
Sure, sure. Do you have anything else you need to tell us, anything about highway or anything, that was really the only thing we wanted to know, it was.
I know that.
Okay, well, good deal, well, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Ross.
Yep. Jason, you're representing the Sheriff's Department, sir.
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead.
As you know, we have two deputy openings, we hope to have one filled by Friday, and that's all I really have, does you guys have any?
Don't think so. Julie, we're glad to have you.
Thanks. Um, I sent you guys my year-end report, we had another record-breaking year. So, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-one runs, that's massive for us, considering we were talking about how massive our runs were in twenty-twenty. Um, we averaged one thousand two hundred and twenty-five a year for the last six years, I think. So, that's, that was big. Um, revenues, that's the biggest revenue that we've ever brought in, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine. That's a little bit because of our volume increase in twenty-twenty and in twenty-twenty-one. Um, we finally got some kinks worked out with our billing company, so it seems like we're finally starting to bring in all the old accounts now, and get our payments, our revenues and reimbursements within thirty to sixty days, instead of having so many that are outstanding up to a hundred and twenty days. That's been kind of nice. Um, I put the total collections and litigation on there, I didn't get my year-end report before I printed this for you guys from those two companies, so, I, I have what I sent them, but I don't have the difference between what they wrote off and what we actually sent on. Um, total fuel consumed, I figured that'd be kind of nice for you guys to see, we all know the cost of fuel has gone up. Seven thousand ninety-one point three gallons, that was between the four ambulances for all of our runs for the entire year, that's what we turned in, um, and sixty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-two miles traveled on our trucks. That's, those miles.
That's significant, I mean, that's a significant number, sixty-three thousand miles.
Yeah, they're not highway miles, those are county road miles, so they're, they're getting beaten to death. Um, January has started off much like, unfortunately, November and December, so our run volume is staying high, I don't see it delivering anytime soon. We tested a record number of people over the last, this past week, we're testing again today, vaccines were still averaging about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty a week, so, um, I think we're going to be fighting this pandemic for a while longer, unfortunately, which keeps our call volume high. I think that's all I have.
What's the, uh, latest on the, uh, new truck?
So, um, I'm hoping to hear from them actually today, it's scheduled to be finished Friday, tomorrow. Um, once they finish it, then they have to ship it to Decatur, which is where we get it.
And as far as Ford building the chassis and everything's scheduled to be finished?
Yes.
Friday.
It's being built now, it's scheduled to be finished Friday, then it has to make it from their facility to Decatur. We aren't going to take our other truck up there until they have actually taken delivery of the chassis, because we had issues with that a couple trucks ago, so, um, I'm hoping to hear from them today, or tomorrow, that they are expecting the chassis.
Good. That's better than it looked a while back.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because they were talking summer for delivery. Oh, for staffing, I did hire a full-time person for our opening that we had, and immediately got another resignation, so we're actually going to be down another medic, and I expect another one to leave around February, so I'm not sure what we're going to do, because I can't get medics to apply. That's going to leave us with a total of five full-time medics, and we, well, a total of four, um, when the second one leaves, we, we truly need six to keep an ALS service, so, it's, it's getting rough, but it's nationwide.
Yeah, I think that's an important point there, that it's not just here, it's every EMS service is struggling with the same situation, so.
The state of Indiana, for the open positions that they had for paramedics, they're short just over twelve hundred paramedics to fill the positions that they have.
You guys need to commend them on the job you're doing on the COVID stuff, because every night on the news, you hear Big O County's done this, that's about a tenth of what you're doing for the population that they got.
They've been mostly shut down, now the hospital, they're triaging patients and only testing, um, those that need to be treated, so.
Those, those counties brag that they've got a couple of clinics a week, and you're there.
Five days a week.
Five days a week, so.
Five days a week.
So.
Every Thursday.
And it's the ambulance service that's doing it.
Yep.
You're doing a fine job.
Great job.
Thank you, I appreciate your job.
Yeah, I like what you talked about earlier with Clay, beating her drum about something else, and.
Yeah.
Been ahead of that for a long time, too, so.
Yeah.
We don't get the prize here from that, but.
Far better job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, Katie?
I got a few things, because this starts out my busy season. Um, we rolled the mobile homes to the auditor, the current mobile homes, which are not on foundation, we rolled those to the auditor yesterday, so she'll start working on that. Um, as a note to some of you who will be particularly interested, the ag base rate came out from the state of Indiana. For twenty-twenty-one, it was one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars per acre, uh, for twenty-twenty-two, it's going to be one thousand five hundred dollars per acre. Classified forest for twenty-one was fourteen dollars and forty-three cents per acre, you know, it used to be a dollar an acre back in the day, and they went, because of inflation, they're doing, basically what they're doing with the ag land, so it was fourteen forty-three for twenty-one, it's going to fourteen dollars and sixty-three cents an acre for twenty-two. Um, another thing.
They're short on the inflation major on that one.
Yes, they are. Um, my Pina Bola hearings, I was supposed to have them on January fifth, and it was hard getting an quorum, and then one of my people got called away unexpectedly, so we had to reschedule, luckily, I will say, all the petitioners were very, very congenial, and they had no problem with me rescheduling, right now, we're scheduled for February the seventeenth, because I have to give them thirty days written notice prior to holding a, a hearing. Um, Form elevens, I have signed again with, uh, not WRL, we used to use WRL, with Midwest Presort, because we have a standing contract with them, and I have to tell them if I want to discontinue that contract, so I look at it first thing at the end of December every year, and, uh, we were paying WRL around ten thousand dollars to do it, and even with inflation, because postage went up and envelopes have gone up, um, it's just shy of eighty-four hundred dollars, so, still a savings there. Personal property, um, couple things on personal property, um, we will be sending out our letters, I don't send out forms anymore to save the county money, I send out letters telling people that if they want forms, I have them, and I'll be more than happy to get those to them, um, or where they can go to file online, I will be sending those out after I get back from conference, Assessors Conference is next week in Indianapolis, and when I get back, I will send those out. Um, they did change the exemption on personal property, which will be addressed in the letter that everyone gets, was forty thousand, you still had to file, but you had to say, I'm under that forty thousand threshold. This year, it's eighty thousand. We're losing money, folks. Um, just, and just an FYI, because I also sit on the Legislative Committee for the Indiana County Assessors Association, there is, um, a bill out there right now on the personal property to take that eighty thousand exemption to two hundred and fifty thousand.
They're, they're working to abolish.
They are, and they're, they're going to take away the thirty percent floor for anything new, so just be aware, we're going to lose quite a bit of money. Not as much as the big counties, but we are going to lose money.
But you lose the cess value.
Exactly.
You don't necessarily lose money, you lose the cess value. It'll shift back to real.
It'll shift, no, that's what I meant, lose money from the personal property, it'll shift, yeah, it's a, it's going to be a tax shift to the rest of us.
Where you go up.
Yes, correct. So, those are just things I wanted you to be aware of, and if any of you need me next week, I will be in Indianapolis, but I will be able to be accessed by email or by phone.
Okay, thanks very much, Cindy, did you have anything now, or are you going to wait with the broadband discussion?
I'll just promote the housing survey, I got that, so.
Well, you can promote the housing survey, go be my guest.
If, if you haven't, I would strongly encourage you to please complete the survey, we have it out via QR code, URL, web link, to get you to it, take you about ten to fifteen minutes to, to complete it, um, we have a goal of trying to get at least five hundred surveys across the county completed, and we're about a third of the way to that goal right now, and it is open till the end of January. And Jessica's going to put it in the paper again, so if you're looking for it, it's on Facebook, on our page, people have shared that.
Okay. Uh, public comment, Christian, did you want to say anything, or just here visiting, or?
Uh, I'm here visiting, but I'll leave these up here on this table, I brought this for you gentlemen, I announced the county campaign chairs earlier this month, so grab a sheet there on your way out the door.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're ready to do the minutes in, have several minutes in your pocket.
The September, September two minutes are the ones before the revisions, the ones we have in our packet. Before the revisions this week. That's the ones before that.
So, we need to wait?
I will not vote to approve those.
So, the revisions have not been made, or?
They've been made, but I think you must just print them on the set, because you sent back a revised ones, I went through them and looked and found them to be correct.
Okay, well, we won't approve those until they're presented correctly. So, other than the September second ones, then, are we good on the others?
Well, I looked at the twenty-eighth one, because I remembered where that revision was, that was fine, um. Just glancing real quick here, make sure we didn't. I believe they're fine, I believe this is our right version.
Okay, other than the September second one, which will table until you can present the corrected version.
All right, motion approved, minutes from September nine, November twelve, December nine, December twenty-eight.
Second.
Most have been made in second, those minutes, all in favor? Uh, I failed to, we need to adopt our meeting schedule, I failed to do that up there in the, when we did appointments, it's in your packet, still the second Thursday of the month, uh, nine AM, budget hearings should be determined and subject to change, so, and I'd ask you to, uh, adopt the meeting, uh, schedule.
So moved.
Second. Most have been made in second, adopt the meeting schedule, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I think we're ready for additional appropriations.
Okay, these are, uh, who the three of these are, we deal with budget things from the twenty-two budget, Drug-Free Community Fund, as you remember, we zeroed that in the budget, uh, the director came and talked to us in late November, um, zeroed for non-appearance at budget hearings, um, so we have an additional put in for that one. Nine-one-one, um, this is, uh, for the overtime, uh, for dispatchers, uh, there was not enough advertised in that fund, when we decided to go ahead and, and make those positions eligible for overtime, uh, to throw that in with the budget, so we'll do it as an additional here. Um, that fifty thousand dollar number is a guess, it's my guess, I'll tell you that right now, I just guessed what it might be, um, I mean, there's some math to try to get to that, but we'll see how it plays out, just have to keep an eye on it. And then the third one is for the ARC fund, this is the, uh, broadband match number that we approved a resolution for, that we will amend here in a little bit, possibly, um, and, uh, that was the, the total match amount, that may end up being changed, or may not be changed as time goes on, but we will have some of it appropriated at least. So, I would urge approval of those additionals, that presented it. There is some question about the Drug-Free Community Fund not having that much money at this point, that's a home rule fund, uh, we can submit it anyway, they do bring in revenue. It doesn't get reviewed by the DLGF, it tells me that it does. So, forward with it anyway.
Move to approve the additional appropriations.
Second.
Most have been made in second, through the additionals, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. We have no transfers, no reappropriations, we have. Jury pay?
Make most pay the jury.
Second. Most have been made in second, pay the jury, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, committee reports.
Uh, Redevelopment Commission did not meet, we will meet, uh, in January for organizational.
Planning and zoning?
Did not meet.
Meeting for house security did not meet, solid waste?
Nothing of those.
Nothing. Okay, ready for new business.
New business. Okay, uh, the first thing we have is a, another amendments, amendment to the salary ordinance, okay, uh, there are two amendments to the salary ordinance in this, uh, deal here, um, you should have this in your, in your stuff. The first one, amending the notation, uh, number fourteen is an error on my part, I had the dispatch supervisor salary wrong in this notation, and the reason that it even is on there is because it's different than the standard increase, as you well know. So, uh, that changes from thirty-four thousand five hundred to thirty-five, uh, in the notation, the actual number in the ordinance on up above was correct. Uh, then we have the, an amendment to, uh, notation seventeen, uh, the hourly overtime rates for the dispatchers and the dispatch supervisor were reported incorrectly by, uh, the Sheriff's Department, so they have recalculated, they ran it through their employment law attorney, to come up with the same numbers, and these are to be the correct numbers for those positions. The jailer, jail officer, jail sergeant numbers did not change, so I would ask, we approve this amendment to the salary ordinance.
So moved.
Okay. Most have been made in second to amend the salary ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Now I'll have to go to the paper to be.
Yes.
Uh, make sure I get that to the paper, because it has to be, uh.
Yes, it will.
One time, that's all.
Has to be public side. Okay, and then we're gonna, you're going to talk about the resolutions?
I'll do the resolutions now, we'll start with the, uh, uh, reduction of Resolution twenty-two oh one, uh, this is a reduction of appropriation resolution, due to another budget, uh, adoption issue, um, the clerk was not made aware, was not aware, um, by anybody prior to submission of the budget, that there was a requirement for a maintenance, or software maintenance agreement for the voting machines in election years. Uh, he brought that to my attention later in the budget hearing, or budget process, at that point, there was nothing we could do about it, it had been advertised, um, he reminded me in the last few days that we needed to deal with that. Uh, the contract amount is twenty-four thousand dollars for the maintenance on these machines, so, um, with there not being money to move an election board department of the general fund, I proposed through a reduction of, uh, twenty-four thousand dollars from the Commissioner's Group Insurance Line, be re-appropriated to the Election Board Service Contracts Line.
And this is just, we just do this in election years?
Just in election years, because the machines don't get used in the off years, there's no maintenance agreement involved with them at that point.
So I'm understanding. The second.
Most have been made in second, deduct the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
We're going to have your copy signed, thank you. Okay, uh, now we have a pair of re, of amended resolutions, and this, I'm going to try to give you the way that we got here. Um, as you know, in our last meeting in December, we adopted Resolution twenty-two-one dash twelve, which was committing a matching amount from our ARC fund to, uh, providers who were applying for next level connection broadband grants. That was adopted as a resolution that would apply to both of the providers who had asked us for support, which was Joint and Bloomingdale Home Telephone. We used the amount that was, that we had calculated, or I had calculated, for Joint's match, and what the ARC Committee had dealt with, as the number to be put out there. Uh, that number at that point was a million four thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, since that point, that came along with an MOU that had a stipulation in there, that the provider could not charge more than two hundred and fifty dollars for an install up to three hundred feet from the road. Joint has, uh, made it officially clear, back in, in the first commissioner meeting of this year, that they would not agree to those terms, because they had not agreed to those terms with any other county that they were in business, in, in, uh, in partnership with. Through many conversations with Commissioner Mies, um, we came to this conclusion that we would, uh, adjust the amount of funding available to Joint, and the amount per passing would be adjusted to accomplish that, uh, and we worked our way into a new split resolution, because at that point, we had committed a certain thirteen hundred dollars per passing to Bloomingdale, Joint was asking for maximum, for up to nine hundred, or minimum of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, that divided by their passings was a lower number, um, so we were committing a lower number to them, since they were going to be allowed to do some charging, uh, above the two hundred and fifty dollar level. That morphs into yesterday, where I was notified by Joint that there was an error in their calculations, or an error in their, uh, uh, information they had presented, both us and the commissioners. You may recall, when they were in here the last time, they had asked for that much, for nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, they had also stated that they were committing three hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars of their own money. A pair of those matches put together was twenty-two percent of the project total cost. They informed me that they had implanted the number from Vermillion County for the match amount into our cost sheet, and that actually, their commitment to this project in Park County was to be one hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. If you add that and the nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar number up together, you are at the bare minimum of twenty percent, with a reduced project cost by the tune of about five hundred thousand dollars. At that point, we were still in. At that point, we were still in the same place. Um, I began to redo these. Uh, really, I guess at that point really didn't require redo, but then I got another call. And due to errors in the data set provided by the state of Indiana to the providers, they have found that they will pass two hundred and fifty fewer addresses than they had initially expected. They were expecting to pass seven hundred and twenty addresses to service the fifty-three eligible locations as part of this grant. They now expect to pass with the same route, four hundred and seventy addresses for the fifty-three eligible. The project cost stays at the same amount of money, five million four hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Their commitment is a hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. The county's minimum to keep the twenty percent is nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Where we get into this from here forward is, is that that's why we change everything from here forward is, is that the commitment per address is now instead of twelve hundred and eleven dollars to Joint, it's seventeen hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Uh, we had committed thirteen hundred dollars to Bloomingdale. In the interest of fairness, we had raised theirs to be the exact same number, at a minimum. So, their MOU, their matching funding increases from what had been, uh, a hundred and thirty-some thousand. I think I have that number written down, but suffice it to say, it's around a hundred, was around a hundred and thirty-some thousand to a hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Their match between them and the county will be over fifty percent and will more than likely skate right through the process and they'll get awarded those locations. So, the decision in front of this group in this joint resolution, since we're first this time, is whether or not we are willing to commit as a county council, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars is a non-revocable, non-revocable commitment to Joint for fifty-three eligible locations and four hundred and seventy passed locations. Along with that will accompany and a requirement to sign a memorandum of understanding that they will be paid seventeen hundred and eighty-nine dollars per each of these locations that they actually can, are awarded and will pass. So, if they are not awarded all fifty-three locations, if they are awarded twenty and they pass a hundred, you can do the math, they would get seventeen hundred and eighty-nine dollars times a hundred and twenty locations. And to match that with Bloomingdale, there's the same set there. Their number would be one hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars with an MOU. That says it'll be distributed the same way. An install up to one hundred feet is no more than two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, an install for the eligible grants locations is three. Uh, this has been an abs, for this week for me has been an absolute mess, to say the least. This has been, I spent countless hours on the phone with them and with Jim and, and back and forth with some of the other members of the committee on what to do with this. Uh, this was dropped last night at about four-thirty. It was a time to try to convene a big conference to deal with it because this is the last chance we have to, to do it, for grant application to do on the twentieth. We have to decide today if we are willing to commit that kind of money to this number of locations. Joint's match and the total project cost is three point oh four percent. Ours is seventeen point one four percent. I don't know how many miles they will travel in this, but they will run fiber in various parts of this county to service these addresses. Over around Raccoon Lake, uh, west of Rockville, north of Bloomingdale, uh, Montezuma area and down around Rosedale. It's kind of the general vicinity so you might get into here. So, from that, I present resolution twenty-two-one dash twelve A. First, I want to do these separate. Uh, this is the joint resolution committing segregating and appropriating funds up to the amount of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand to be applied to the application submitted by Joint. Are there any questions from you all before we move forward?
So, are the commissioners now on board with this, or is Mies on board with this?
Mies is on board with this. This is as much or more his, this is really, in our conversations last evening, this is his decision to move forward, to present this to both bodies. The thing that if they were actually to get awarded this, okay, this is an important number and, and I think we need to probably say this. They are requesting four million five, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars from the next level connections grant. So, almost four point four million dollars of investment they're requesting. Will they get it? Uh, I can go on for a while about that, but they are requesting a four million, a four point four million dollar investment in this project. His belief, I can't argue with it, is, is that if we commit this to try to get that much, yes.
Me, we're talking about Mies? Mies, okay, go ahead.
Then if we commit this much to try to pick up four point four million dollars, you know, you leveraged a lot of money after a lot more money.
Kind of comes down to, uh, what you say, that the numbers have been wrong from two different sources. That's what got us in this mess.
Well, the, the location number i- is correct. Now, I would have made, was made aware of this being an issue the day before. Bloomingdale ran into something with this. Um, they were able to work their way out through it, but they ran into these, this data set not being good.
And then Joint put Vermillion County numbers in.
That's their fault. They put Vermillion County's match number into our data.
Kind of wrong ass, that's kind of their fault, but.
That's their fault.
And they want us to buck up and make up the difference.
Um, well, no, they're not, we're, what, we're not making up any difference. Um, we're actually lowering from this initial resolution, we're lowering the financial commitment by, uh.
About a hundred thousand.
About a hundred thousand, right? It's a short of that, but yes, about a hundred thousand dollars. But they are barely, I mean, they're gonna squeak in at, uh, what is this, twenty point oh, or twenty point one eight percent match. The minimum applies twenty. And one other thing, I mean, it is what it is, but they have three projects that they've been working on in this county that are NLC two projects, they committed the twenty percent themselves, there was not a county dollar put into those. So, they did do that.
Well, give me your gut feeling on that.
My gut feeling on the result?
You, you've been into this up to your eyeballs since day one.
I have, I have. Well, this is Roy's opinion, this is in an official position of the county council. This is Roy's opinion. I believe that it'll be an absolute struggle for them to get approved at a twenty percent match for any of this. Twenty some of these addresses that they're applying for are being applied for by Bloomingdale Home Telephone Company. Their total project cost is seven hundred and some odd thousand dollars. They will be over a fifty percent match. Where's that money gonna go? You know, and, you know, we can all pretty well extrapolate the answer to that one, right? Uh, I don't remember the number, a half a dozen to a dozen of these, uh, are, are AT&T applied for. I don't know what AT&T's match was, they haven't requested a dollar from the county. I think it probably is going to be a tough sled to win those. So, now you're into the, you know, ten, fifteen, maybe twenty locations at most left. And will they get those? Well, the governor said the other night that there'd been six hundred and some million dollars requested from two hundred and fifty million available. Is a twenty percent match project going to win through when there's going to be several fifty percent ones? But here's the other side of this. If they do, there's some mileage of fiber gets laid in this county. Somewhere, whatever they went, if they went in a single location, there's at least some distance of fiber that got laid from this. Will there be all of this spent? No. I think I can say that with near certainty. It's expensive, it's very expensive, it's more expensive than I can even imagine. But are we, we're gambling a little bit, but is it a big risk? I don't think it's a terribly big risk because I really don't know that I, that I think that project will get many awarded. I just don't know that it will.
Well, we're not on the hook for a whole bunch that we're not gonna get. Uh, we're, we're gonna get something out of it, I don't have a problem with it. But, uh, I don't wanna hang a bunch of.
Well, you're only on the hook for what this thing says, so I mean, you know, you're not gonna.
I have a real concern about leaving people hanging out there that are gonna be billed, you know, are charged or quoted, you know, two, three, four thousand dollars to connect to a fiber that's in the, in the roadway. But I also know this, that if that fiber's not in the roadway, it doesn't really matter, matter how much money they throw into it, they don't really have a choice. The homeowner can make the decision if they wanna spend four thousand dollars to connect fiber optic internet in the roadway. They can't make that decision if it's not there. I, I, I fought, I fought this war about those install costs. I went off on him last night about this and the number of locations and, and how much we're getting into this. I bring it in front of you guys and you guys can make your decision based upon, and that's why I said, or any other questions so that I can try to get you what you need to make a decision on that.
You're talking about Joint?
Yes.
Yeah, Bloomingdale pretty well handled it.
Yeah, um, Bloomingdale added three locations eligible. They're challenging some challenges, which I encourage them to do. And they'll add three more passing, so their number has gone up six from what it was the end of the year.
I think our, I think our citizens deserve at least a chance to have it.
Yeah, I think if, it's just like if, if they don't have a chance, why they, I mean.
But I, I, I would, I would not.
We've got to get.
I would not sleep well, but we deny it a chance for them to have it.
Andy and Larry, that's why I brought it for you instead of us, you know, basically cut and bait at the point where we got into this being a, a bit of a boondoggle. It's, we give the opportunity to them and the opportunity to our citizens. And if they choose at that point, if it gets approved and they choose to pay that kind of money to connect to, that is their personal choice. I can't in good faith look at them and say, I can't give you that. I tried and tried and tried to cap it for them. I tried to get that done. That they could not be forced into paying those types of numbers because I frankly think that is egregious. And they know that, they know exactly what I think about that. But I also know that if they don't have it in the front yard, it doesn't matter. It don't matter how many dollars you wanna throw out at that point, they don't have it. They kept it what it's worth, guys.
Well, I agree with Larry, I mean, I think that's well said. And, and you know, if we can take this first step and then maybe, and I do think it's egregious to charge somebody four thousand dollars to connect, but maybe there'll be other opportunities that that can be dealt with down the road. But if we don't have it in the road, why?
Yeah, you, you gain nothing.
We gain nothing. And I mean, now's the time, so. I would recommend we approve it. Any other questions? The audience, I even let the audience, you probably wanna ask? So, do you wanna comment?
With everything that was said.
You've been involved in this, like, as Roy has, I mean.
Well, maybe something will come along after it's installed and everything that could be.
Like Roy said, if some fiber does get installed, won't that increase the opportunity that another provider will come on and extend that network at their expense?
Possible, possible.
It's always possible and.
At least in the game, we're in the game.
Okay, well, there before you, so.
We'll do it separately.
Hey, what, we'd like them separately, so let's, uh, we'll do Bloomingdale first.
Twenty-two-one dash twelve dash B is Bloomingdale's. That's, uh, segregate and appropriate funds up to the amount of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Most have been made and seconded to approve resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash B, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Twenty-two-one dash twelve dash A is Joint. Uh, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand segregated and appropriated.
With the proof, resolution twenty-two-one dash twelve A.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Both?
I'm abstaining.
Roy abstains. Okay.
I did all this, I fucked one fair enough, sorry, I just not.
That's fine, you're, you're saying that.
That's exactly right, that's why I brought it in front of all you all.
Why I said that.
I'm really.
We appreciate all of, because I've seen all the emails back and forth and, oh my gosh, and then this is, and you wouldn't believe the number of emails between Mies and Roy and, and all, some of the other committee members and it's been, uh, all I do is just read them and comment once in a great while.
I couldn't begin to tell you how much time's been spent on that this week. How many hours I've lost asleep thinking about it.
Maybe the first, maybe it'll bear some fruit.
I hope so.
That's the whole, that's the, yeah.
Included in your packet are the copies of the MOUs, um.
We did not adopt those.
We did not, those were only agreement between the commissioners and the provider. They both assured me verbally that they would sign these documents, or I wasn't bringing this forward, so they have, heard me, they will sign them.
Do you need me to send the signed ones to the appropriate provider?
Yeah.
We'll be passing those.
But they will not, uh, well, this is only you sign these.
Oh, okay, well, we got.
Yeah, after commissioners, yeah.
Yeah, it won't be till Tuesday.
Uh, another topic I wanted to bring in, the legislature, I think last session, um, allows us to adopt some sort of resolution about, uh, uh, members meeting remotely. And, you know, we can't all or meet remotely, I think there are certain, I mean, like fifty percent of us can be remote. You can have a Zoom meeting or whatever. I don't care what you do. I talked to Mr. Clutter, our attorney, about it, he said he could write some sample resolutions for you to look at and see if you're interested in allowing members to meet remotely, or if you're not interested, why we won't. But we have to have something, we just can't decide, oh, well, we can meet remotely. We have to have an adopted resolution and how to handle that. Are you interested in us looking into that, or are you? I don't, you know, there's no need for me to, if none of you are in favor of that one, there's no need for me to waste time on it. You wanna at least look at it, or?
My position is we should look at one and it doesn't have, hurt to have that as a tool if it ever became necessary.
It's not something we wanna encourage, I mean, I think if we all, possible, we'd be need, be here in person because you miss the interaction. But at the same time, I mean, if somebody is, can't be here or something, like, if you're willing to look at them, why I'll have him.
Well, if this meeting was last week, I wouldn't be here.
Oh, because you had the crib or whatever.
So, you know, we, you know, you can at least then open that door.
Right, but we have to have a policy and a resolution to do that. I can't just let you, because basically the policy of this council is you can listen on the phone, but I can't let you vote or do anything else. Uh, but if we have a resolution and a, an actual, uh, program and policy, why, then we'll, we'll do that. So, I'll tell Clutter to write some things and you can look at them if you don't want to do them, why, that's fine. I don't, I don't really care one way or another, it's not, I'm not pushing it or whatever. He mentioned it, it was in an email, and I said, yeah, maybe we'll look at that. We'll have that in a month or so. Anything else?
I do. Uh, are the encumbrances coming in?
Yes, they are.
And they're due tomorrow, correct?
Yes, I'll go send out a reminder, make sure that, that everybody does have their ZMIS P M.
Okay, and they will be presented for us in February?
That is correct.
Uh, the comp time payout for jailers, dispatchers.
And that's, um, just right here.
All that's due will be on this pay period. We have the numbers provided by the sheriff's department and everything, and that's all moving along swimmingly.
And then my payroll person didn't understand about the first of the month was longevity and the other pay. So, those people are gonna be caught up here on this paycheck here.
Okay. Yeah, that's longevity and one of the stipends or something takes effect on calendar pays, you know, it's on, I don't remember which one.
So, it's only gonna affect like the ones that went then like.
It changed, right.
Yeah, that, that's the five years to ten years, whatever that is.
Precisely, precisely. Okay, uh, the overtime for the, uh, jailers, dispatchers, it's all going all right as well? We should, actually probably, you would have some submission of that by now, I suppose. Okay. Uh, does the council wish to, uh, continue a budget preparation deal as we have done, as we did last year? You don't have to decide that today, but we'd like to make sure we get that on the radar to do it at some point.
Uh, do you mean to get you, uh, somebody to help? Yeah, far as I'm concerned, we can. Do you want, we want me to decide now if everybody's in?
Yes.
No issues with it at all.
We better, actually, let's do it formal in that way, it's better for the, everybody. So, that allow Roy to hire someone to do the helping.
Some move. Go ahead, I'll say it.
Second, okay. Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there you go. Anything else? We're about to run out of time.
I'm, I'm.
HSA, HRA.
We have a lot of documents to sign, so don't.
Our decisions are due middle of next month. HSA, HRA.
Yes, HSA, that just, that cannot be calculated until February the first. So then the HSA money will be going out sometime by the middle of February.
Those old guys on the HRA, we could have it sometime.
Yes, yeah.
Well, just looking at, looking how deserving you are.
He's just really handy when he got all the bills coming up, Jim. He's floating.
Okay, anything else? Anything else?
I think I'm done.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, hang around because we've got stuff to sign.